Good evening. My name is Paul Mendez and would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. To begin tonight's meetings, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Tanya Bowers.
President.
Paul Mendez.
President.
Kim Laramine.
President.
Abel Campos.
President.
Rachel Teal.
President.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran. Mr. Chair, there are six members present and we do have a court.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to City Council regarding changes to the City Comprehensive Plan, Lens Use Updates, Block Grant Allocations, and Sonning Codes. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and the development of community, the impacts of land, use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This evening is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selections there. There are also copies of the meeting agendas available online on the City of Pasco website so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent interruptions during a meeting. For those present during this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we may know that you would like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for a record. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be heard this time or it will be waived. First of all, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to object to any Planning Commission member having any, hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We as the Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record. The City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the June 16 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Chair, this is Commissioner Bowers. I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 16.
Thank you. Need a second?
Commissioner Handler, I second.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Bauer has moved to approve the minutes as presented. Commissioner Handler has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item of the agenda, it is a public hearing. It is a block grant, 2023 Commission Development Block Grant, CDBG allocations, master file, BGAP 2022-003. Mr. Gonzalez?
Before I begin, I'm going to actually have Jerry Martinez step up and introduce himself. He's the new executive director with the Downtown Pasco Association Authority.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Good evening, Commission. I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself. I'm the new executive director for the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, the organization that manages the Pasco Specialty Kitchen and the Pasco Farmers Market. I believe I missed our formal opportunity to interact. I think the same day that we were supposed to give a presentation, it was actually my first day on the job, so I just want to stop by here for my organization's information and to be of resource for you all if any questions come up during the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight I bring you the staff recommendations.
Hello. Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight I bring you the staff recommendations for the 2023 CDBG allocations. You heard from the applicants at the June Planning Commission meeting. And your package tonight is the memorandum that explains how the funds have to be broken down so that we meet the public service cap, planning and administration cap, as well as the payment for the Section 108 debt. After discussions and staff evaluation, it is recommended that the activities set forth in Attachment 1 would best meet the City Council, city's consolidated plan, and be most effective in carrying out the objectives for the 2023 year. Your review and consideration for recommendations to the City Council would be appreciated and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any follow-on questions? I know this item was discussed and there was some public input. What do you see before you on the screen is the recommended allocations? Any questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Teal. On our list, I think it is number, it's the City of Pasco Chip Minor Rehab, and I was just curious why the funding was larger than the agency requested. So it would be the CHIP Minor Rehab Program 1.
Because we received program income. We've had some Pasco residents that have paid off previous rehabs with us, and so that money has to go back into it. And we just found that out, that we had a discrepancy in the amount.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Good question. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Hi, this is Commissioner Bowers. And I wanted to ask a question. I noticed that for number one, CDBG program administration, there's no non-CDBG match. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So basically, all the money that goes into this ends up covering admin costs?
Yes, salaries and supplies, trainings, yeah.
Got it. Okay. And then my next question was wondering about the Girl Scouts of Eastern Washington and Northern Idaho. I was wondering why you made the suggestion that it should not be funded?
Basically, we made that suggestion because of the risks that they are. If you look on the second column to the end, that shows what kind of risk they are, and they're a high risk because they've never applied with us before.
Ah, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. So basically, if they were to apply again next year, would that, would the risk be lower?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? If not, I have a question regarding the, it looks like item 12, City of Pasco, Section 108 debt repayment, $200,000, agency request. Staff is recommending the same. Is that to service the debt?
Yes.
Do we know how much it is?
How much the debt is? The debt was $3.7 million. So we'll be paying $200,000 for the next 30 years.
Thank you. If there's no other comments from the, or questions from the commissioners, I guess at this point, we open up for additional questions? If there are any, any of the applicants would like to come forward and speak to the request again, provide additional input, this is the time. Hello.
My name is Mariana Marquesital. I live in Pasco, from Pasco. I'm with the Girl Scouts, and I just wanted to make a comment that we have received funding and maybe it doesn't apply, but from the city of Richland last year with the same funding, CBDG funds. I just wanted to make that and put it on the record. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
What other sources of funding does the Girl Scouts have?
For the Go Getters Program, the first year we were awarded a grant by Women Helping Women, $25,000, and that's been used last year. Every year we start over, so that's the only type of funding we have so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diana Izagiri, and I am with Domestic Violence Services. I first of all, wanted to thank the Planning Commission for entertaining our application. We're disappointed, we didn't, we didn't get it, but I appreciate the explanation of the risk factor. Similar to the Girl Scouts, we also have received CDBG funds from Richland and some other places, but we look forward to applying again, and we really do appreciate your support in everything we've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, their resources are limited and many applications, and I encourage you to continue to apply. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak? Going once? Going twice? Three times? At this time, I would like to entertain a motion from the commissioners.
This is Commissioner Campos. Before I make a motion, just want to say that I want to thank all the applicants for applying for CDBG. You know, it's kind of hard choosing and picking who we wish that we could give to everybody, but unfortunately, we can. And so we do want to just encourage everyone to keep on trying and we'll keep on doing our best to continue to give this out, these funds out. So here's my motion. I move the Planning Commission close the public hearing on the use of funds for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program. Further move that the Planning Commission forward recommendation as presented to the City Council Workshop for consideration.
Do I have a second? Did I hear a second?
Commissioner Handler, all second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
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 Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner Campos and second by Commissioner Bowers. The motion passed unanimously. And what's the path forward on this?
This will go before the City Council at a workshop and then also at a regular meeting. Then we will wait until next year when we find out how much funding we actually get.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to the second block grant application, home investment. Ms. White?
Tonight I bring you the, can you go to the next slide? Tonight I bring you the recommendations for the home program for 2023. As you can see from this slide, the allocations are broken down by the program administration, down payment assistance, and tenant-based rental assistance. Last year, the City of Pasco, out of the three cities that are in the home consortium, was the only city to do a down payment assistance loan. And so far this year, the City of Pasco, again, is the only city to do a down payment assistance loan. From 2015 to 2021, home funds provided down payment assistance to 77 Pasco first-time home buyers. With the increase of the housing market, it has become more difficult for Pasco residents to find homes within the purchase limit, which is regulated by HUD. Your review and recommendation to the City Council would be appreciated, and I stand for any questions.
Commissioners, what questions do you have on the home program? It sounds like we got it pretty covered, well-covered the last time, so at this time, we're going to open it for public hearing. Any individual wishes to speak on the particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Public hearing is closed on this item. At this time, I will entertain a motion, commissioners.
This is Commissioner Bowers, and it doesn't look like we have a motion, but our review and recommendation to the City Council, it says would be appreciated. And I can say that this looks like a solid proposal to reinvest in the Home Investment Partnerships Program. I'd like the work plan, and I think we should go forward to try and offer more opportunities towards homeownership in Pasco.
So I believe we have a motion to close the public hearing on this particular item. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Handler, all second.
Thank you so much. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
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 Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner Bauer, second by Commissioner Handler, and the motion passed unanimously. What's the path forward on this one?
This one as well will go to City Council Workshop and then to City Council Regular Meeting for Approval.
Great, thank you so much. So that concludes the public hearings, moving on to workshops. And I believe the first item, it's a memo, City Council Goals and National Community Survey. I trust the commissioners had a chance to review. Mr. Gonzalez, is this one of yours?
Yes. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. And with your permission, we would like to start with the presentation from the Benton-Franklin Health District. We have a presenter from the Health District in attendance, and again, with your permission, we'd like to start with that and then move forward with the council goal and then the connectivity memos. Thank you. So again, good evening. In an effort to introduce other community partners and organizations, staff has invited the Benton-Franklin Health District to provide a presentation on their ongoing efforts to develop the Regional Community Health Needs Assessment. Staff from both the Planning Department and BFHD, the Health District, communicate on a regular basis and we collaborate from time to time. As noted in the staff report, most recently, staff is working with the Health District on various housing-related efforts. I think throughout the variety of efforts that we've brought to the Planning Commission over several years, I think we've also tried to emphasize a relationship between the built and natural environment and the impact on public health. So with that, I'd like to introduce and welcome Kelly Harnish, Community Health Educator and the Community Health Improvement Plan Coordinator from the Benton-Franklin Health District to provide a presentation to the commission. Welcome.
Thank you, Jacob. And thank you to the City of Pasco Planning Commission for giving me this opportunity to share what we have learned and what we plan to do going forward and how we can partner together. I'd like to introduce a little bit more about the Benton-Franklin Health District and what we do beyond the Needs Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan. And then I will introduce more about the Community Health Needs Assessment and Improvement Plan, review the data that we have collected over the last several months, and show the preliminary priorities that we've come up with for the next three-year cycle. And then explain some of our guiding concepts, which I believe will be very interesting to the City of Pasco Planning Commission, as it really includes partnership and the lived environment for our community members. So this is the building that houses the Benton-Franklin Health District in Kennewick. We also have a Pasco branch as well. Our Benton-Franklin Health District leadership includes Jason Zakaria and Dr. Amy Person. As many people may be aware, she is leaving her post at the end of this month, and we will have an interim health officer starting on September 1st. Our health board includes, from Franklin County, Commissioner Mullen, Commissioner Brad Peck, Commissioner Diddler, I'm sorry, Diddier, and in Benton County, Commissioner McKay, Commissioner Delvin, and Commissioner Small. The mission of our health district is to provide all people in our community the opportunity to live full, productive lives by promoting healthy lifestyles, preventing disease and injury, advancing equity, and protecting our environment. When we think of the word equity, it's very important to Benton-Franklin Health District in our mission. Benton-Franklin Health District believes everyone in the community should have opportunity to attain their highest level of health. We value and serve all people regardless of age, race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic status, or physical or mental abilities. Some of the services we provide impact the people, the places, and the environment of Benton and Franklin Counties. I gathered some pictures that represented the beautiful city of Pasco, and I just wanted to explain a little bit more about some of the services that are provided from that lens. For people of Pasco and beyond in the Benton and Franklin County region, we provide women, infant, and children services, WIC, services for families with children, women who are pregnant or have children under the age of five. The Nurse Family Partnership, which helps address at-risk families and helps them with nurse visits to the home to help them stabilize and have healthy futures. There are immunization services, childhood injury prevention services, and a lot of health education services as well. As far as places are concerned, I gathered this picture from the Friday food truck night, and we do have the Environmental Health Department, which does inspections on all food establishments routinely and provides a level of safety for our community when it comes to their food establishments that they're patronizing. And then from the environmental perspective, as many people know, we've recently had a toxic algae incident, and we really thank Pasco, the City of Pasco, for the partnership that they have had with the Benton-Franklin Health District on alleviating that and staying on top of that with all of the communication to the community. And we also have the connection, as Jacob alluded to, with the built environment and the health of our community, safe routes to school, and healthy access to the places that people need to go in order to stay well or to get well, such as access to school and healthcare. So I'll go into a little bit more about the Needs Assessment and the Community Health Improvement Plan. The Community Health Needs Assessment Steering Committee is well-represented at the Health District and at Catholic Providence, also Prosser Memorial Health joined our steering committee, and the Benton-Franklin Community Health Alliance. A Community Health Needs Assessment is a systematic process to determine critical health needs, and we follow a three-year cycle because we partner with Catholic Providence. And so we're required to do a needs assessment every five years, but our partnership with Catholic has us doing the needs assessment every three years, so it's updated even more frequently than our requirement outlines. And it really helps us uncover not just the health needs of the community, but also helps us identify assets and leverage partnerships in the community as well. And so from the needs assessment, we then create what's called the Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP, which is a long-term and systematic effort to address the needs that were identified in the needs assessment. And this is taken out over a three-year cycle, again, just like the needs assessment. The very great thing about this plan, it is not something that just belongs to the Health District, it actually belongs to the entire community. So all of the partners of the Health District, including the cities, the counties, small nonprofit agencies, school districts, healthcare facilities, all can benefit from the plan because the data is from our community who we serve. We follow our needs assessment process, and it helps us maintain FAB accreditation, which is Public Health Accreditation Board Accreditation at the Health District, which promotes a quality, a culture, excuse me, a culture of quality and performance improvement. And it really increases our capacity to respond to the public health emergencies that we know are so important. And it encourages our use of health equity as a lens to identify priorities. And the really great thing that I'll keep talking about is that it really helps us strengthen our health department's work with our partners so we can better serve the community. This outline shows the process of going through the needs assessment and the CHIP. So you can see the last time that a needs assessment was completed was in 2019, which led to the 2020 CHIP. That 2020 CHIP is still active, and we are still implementing parts of that needs assess, or of that CHIP, and it is being tracked. It will be closed at the end of this year. Meanwhile, we've been working hard all year on the 2022 needs assessment, which will then lead to the 2023 CHIP. I wanted to give an example of one of the goals and objectives that is in the 2020 Community Health Improvement Plan as it relates to work that we have done with the City of Pasco. Social determinants of health was a priority area in the 2020 CHIP. And one of the goals under that priority area was that health and social determinants of health, which are the basic needs of housing, food, and just kind of our basic needs, housing, water, and food, and safety, are considered and evaluated in community-level initiatives. And that objective 3.1 was to increase health and all policies messages throughout the larger community through active engagement with non-traditional health-impacting coalitions and groups. I had the great opportunity to attend the Washington Walkability Moveab I had the, uh, great opportunity to attend the Washington Walkability, Moveability Action Institute in May, and, um, Mr. Gonzalez was able to attend as well as part of our team to represent the City of Pasco. Uh, we also had representation from Benton Franklin Council of Governments, Benton Franklin Transit, and, um, Benton Franklin Health District, of course, and we also had Aging and Long-Term Care join us to the institute. And what we really spent time doing was a three-day immersion on the connection between the built environment and public health. Um, everything from roadways to window placements, tree planting, um, and safe access to, um, crossings. And this applies to all ages, so whether it's a school child getting to school, um, somebody in midlife, um, living with a disability, or somebody who is an aging adult who has, um, a limitation of some type. So moving on to the 2022 needs assessment. Uh, the, the ways that we collected this data was to do interviews with working partners and community collaborators. I'll refer to them as partners for brevity. Uh, we did listening sessions, community survey that went out to over 650 community residents in Benton and Franklin County. Um, excuse me, on the listening sessions, those were, uh, focused on members of our community with lived experience, including, um, Union Gospel Mission, um, parents of children who are in the, um, migrant program in the Kennewick School District, um, parents of children or adults from the ARC, and many other partners, um, who we worked with in order to, uh, to listen to people with lived experiences throughout the community. We also held topic-focused forums, specifically behavioral health and housing and homelessness. And those two topic, those two topics came out of our previous needs assessment. We identified that we did not know enough about those issues in order to create action plans around them. So those, um, forums really helped fill in the gaps of our knowledge and were able to go forward with some really focused, um, objectives and goals in the next go-around. We also held two general forums. When we did our interviews with partners, their highest priority needs were identified as mental health, substance use misuse, access to healthcare services, and homelessness and housing instability. Specifically, they were concerned about housing and homelessness instability, uh, sorry, homelessness and housing instability because it's connected to so many other needs. Um, what, the point that was driven home with this group was housing-first concept, and that will help alleviate other health, um, needs that these folks have. Medium priority needs identified by our partners were economic insecurity, education, and job skills, and access to affordable childcare and preschools. Um, food insecurity came up for, as a medium priority, and community safety. With our listening sessions with members of the community with lived experience, you'll see a consistent pattern with their high-priority community needs of addressing mental health, homelessness and housing instability, access to healthcare and services, and substance use misuse. Medium-level needs were community resources, safety, transportation, and economic security, including job training and educational opportunities. And then their additional needs also included family support and parenting support, um, including affordable childcare before and after care. This was, um, this was supported by a lot of the quantitative data that we saw about the availability of childcare in our region. Uh, I think it's about 15% of children under the age of three have access to affordable and licensed daycare. So, um, this is being felt by people with lived experience as well. They also are, um, looking for necessities, such as diapers. Um, also out of the listening sessions, many people experienced racism when seeking job opportunities. They experienced discrimination and, um, felt that they were turned away from care. And they wanted more inclusion for people with developmental disabilities and, um, people who are experiencing homelessness. So we did put out a survey, March through April, and it was available in English and Spanish. Um, about 650 people responded to the survey, and half of the respondents are satisfied with their quality of life in this region. About 57% are getting all the healthcare they needed with no delay. 73% reported getting all the mental healthcare they needed, and 67 responded that they got all the dental healthcare they needed. There were four groups consistently reporting that they experienced a lower quality of life, lower overall health, and less access to care than other groups. So the four groups, um, that did report those, uh, conditions were y- young adults aged 18 to 34 in both counties, um, Hispanic respondents in both counties, and residents living in Franklin County, low-income respondents as well. As I mentioned, we, uh, specifically wanted to learn more about behavioral health needs in our community, and, um, an absolutely unified theme is a workforce shortage. Um, so there is a need for boosting the workforce, um, and helping kind of recruit people into, uh, joining the, you know, behavioral health team and, and alleviating some of those needs, but there's also a need for crisis response, so we need response and we need prevention. Um, there also needs to be more residential recovery, mental health support systems in our community. And from the Housing and Homelessness Forums, um, the identified themes were, uh, linkages to resources, creating more low-barrier immediate housing. Um, there are places where people who are experiencing homelessness or are temporarily unhoused can go, but there are barriers, um, in place in some of those agencies, so, uh, the need was voiced that there needs to be access to more low-barrier housing. Um, also addressing issues related to zoning and building codes to create more affordable housing options and promoting that housing-first concept, addressing unhoused homeless stigma. In our general health, uh, general community health forums, the preliminary themes that came out of those forums, a real look at youth wellness, um, specifically what came out of our, uh, seeing what we saw in the youth wellness data, this was all quantitative data. Um, 80% of our youth aren't getting enough physical activity, and I think that relates really well to the built environment, giving, um, youth opportunities to go to the places they need to go safely and with active transportation can, um, be a part of that solution. Um, on the home front, about a third of the youth, um, surveyed are experiencing verbal abuse at home, and about one-fifth of 10th and 12th graders have experienced physical abuse at home. And so there are some social, emotional needs that our youth have, um, and family supports, uh, that, that are needed to be addressed as well. Environmental health came up as a preliminary theme because of, uh, an increase in COPD rates, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease rates in our regions compared to Washington State. And access to care and resources also came up. So I want to talk a little bit about where this is heading with our 2023 preliminary, um, priority areas. So as you might imagine, behavioral health and housing and homelessness are listed as two of the prime, of the priority areas, and from these, we will take them and develop goals, objectives, and specific action steps and work with partners throughout the community. And that's where I really am, uh, fortunate and appreciative of having this opportunity to speak with the Planning Commission because it's a great way to ha- to build those partnerships as we move forward with the plan, uh, which will be developing over the next several months. Access to health includes many things beyond healthcare. It does include access to healthcare, uh, but it does also include access to childcare, access to, um, healthy and safe food, access to all the things that we need in order to live full, healthy lives. And then, um, I'm really excited about this fourth, uh, priority area, the community partnership development. I think there's a lot of opportunities, and I think a lot, based on my experience at the forums, there are a lot of people working very hard in this community who would love to partner on, um, helping make some changes to make this community, this very great community even healthier and have a, um, even better quality of life. So you'll notice the magenta ribbon at the bottom of the screen has a few concepts. I'll talk a little bit more about those guiding concepts that we are intending to include in all of our goals and objectives moving forward. A real focus on equity so that we make sure that any goals and objectives that we, uh, that we plan to do, um, create a playing field that, uh, is fair and, and addresses the folks in the community who are experiencing the greatest need. Um, collective impact is where we can all make the impact by working together, um, and share our joint functions, our agencies, and our skills in order to, um, really move the needle on some of the issues that we've identified. Using evidence-based interventions to make sure that, um, what we are putting our time and resources into is shown to be effective. And life-course wellness has a very important role to play too in our priorities going forward. We would like to use life-course wellness in the concept that, um, for example, a y- young person who, uh, experiences homelessness as a child has a higher risk for chronic diseases later on in life. So we want to consider the entire lifespan of the people in our community and understand that when we support people at all ages, um, we support them for their whole life. And we want to help encourage all of our partners in adopting health and all policies. And that really helps to kind of, uh, bridge that gap between all of our various roles, but know that a- at the end of the day that we're all here to make sure that we have a healthy community. So we're very enthusiastic about this opportunity to speak with you all this evening, and, um, I know that the Benton Franklin Health District is enthusiastic to maintain partnerships with the City of Pasco. Um, this is a great opportunity to start being involved in outlining goals and objectives that are feasible, impactful, and, uh, collaborative. I have contact information listed on this slide, and I also left cards on, at the countertop by the exit. Well, I welcome you to contact me with questions or to get more information. And I've listed resources here. The tops, uh, the top link has all of the data that we collected over the last several months. Um, listed, both the qualitative and quantitative data is there for you to review. The Community Health Needs Assessment, the final version of the report will be available in October for the community, and that will also be linked here. Um, and we will do our very best to communicate that out to all of our partners as broadly as we are able to. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
This is Commissioner Compost. I don't have any questions, but I do want to just say that we appreciate, um, all the information that you've given us. Um, I was really looking forward to, um, you just hearing about the CHNA, uh, report, and just was just wondering how, um, you guys had come up with all the different, um, you know, just assessments and everything that came through. So you, you answered all my questions. I mean, we're, the reality of you guys interviewing so many people and doing the listening sessions and surveys, and you, I mean, you spoke a lot about you guys, so I really do appreciate that. It really, um, helps me understand how you guys truly got to all the assessments that are needed, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I do have, um, some questions if you don't mind. Um, uh, I, I understand the, in the tri-city's number of residential facilities, I wasn't aware that Pasco had any?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Residential facilities?
Residential facilities for, um, rehabilitation?
And mental health, um, folks that need a place to, to be when they're experiencing mental challenges?
Um, currently, the, the Crisis Center is at Lord's. Um, and in, uh, the Benton Franklin Behavioral Health Advisory Co- Committee is working towards establishing a recovery center. Um, it sounds like the tentative date for opening that will be in 2025, but it will be a no-wrong-door facility where, whether it's a mental health crisis or a substance use crisis, um, they will welcome people in and, um, from their help to figure out what the, um, underlying issue is and what the treatment plan will be. And that will be in Kennewick.
Thank you. Uh, I think you also mentioned that there was, uh, incidents of COPD?
Yes.
In the area, is that related to forest fires?
Uh, well, we, we don't know with this, with the needs assessment, we don't always know exactly what the why is, and this is an example of that. Um, it may be forest fires, um, it, it could be air quality issues. Uh, one question we have is, are we monitoring people more than in other communities? Because we have the Hanford site here and there's a lot of monitoring of, um, lung, you know, diseases. So that may be a factor that we are aware of more than other communities are, but it also may be that we do experience dryer weather, um, and forest fires in the summer, lower air quality days.
Thank you. Um, I apologize if I cut off anybody. Uh, Commissioners, are there any other questions?
Hi, this is Commissioner Bowers, and I just wanted to say it's really wonderful having something like this, and it would be great if we would really use this to speak to things like our CD BG grants and how we prioritize, um, those requests that align with these, uh, priorities.
Thank you. I definitely agree with you. It's, it's a, you know, doing this every three years gives everybody a fresh look at what the most current needs are, um, so I appreciate you making that connection. It's a great way to prioritize resources when they're available.
Well, maybe just for us, next year when we do this, Kristin, it would be great if we could, um, just see that last slide about the priorities that were determined?
Yes, absolutely. So the prioritization, um, is coming close to being finalized, and then the final Community Health Improvement Plan will be posted early next year. So we're absolutely happy to come back, um, as we're invited and, and present on that, uh, because I do think it will be helpful, as you said, to help prioritize your resources.
Anybody else? If not, uh, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Learned a few things.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, uh, for the presentation. Um, and I think the next item, uh, actually will, will help address some of the questions, um, uh, or the interest, uh, and the need of aligning the variety of, of goals and policies or planning efforts, um, as we develop strategies or policy recommendations. Um, this next item, uh, is a presentation on the recently adopted, uh, Pasco City Council Goals with a short summary of the results of the, uh, 2021 National Community Survey. Um, on May 16th, 2022, Pasco City Council passed the, uh, Resolution Number 4182, establishing goals for 2022 and 2023. Uh, these goals are updated, um, and established after council has considered a significant input from the community, including using the results from the, uh, National Community Survey and hosting public forums. There's also a significant amount of, of input regarding outside agencies and stakeholders and partners to make sure that we're working cooperatively across the region as well. So again, council goals derive from a variety of, of efforts, uh, partner organizations, the survey, and, uh, input from city leadership and management. Uh, just a quick summary of the goal statements under quality of life, uh, the, uh, intent to promote a high quality of life through quality programs, services, and the appropriate investments and reinvestments in community infrastructure. Under financial sustainability, uh, the opportunity to enhance long-term viability, value and service levels, and programs. Community safety, uh, the promotion and proactive approaches for the strategic investment of infrastructure, staffing, and equipment, including, um, that's actually a reference to the Fire Department, Police Department, but, uh, recent Fire Department Master Plan has a lot of relationship to the things we do in planning. Um, again, with economic vitality, uh, the, uh, goal of promoting and encourage economic vitality. And, uh, community transportation network, something that this commission's, um, heard a lot about over the past three years. Uh, promoting a highly functional multimodal transportation network. And community identity, identifying opportunities to enhance community identity cohesion and image. And a big part of community identity is listening to what our residents and businesses, um, are telling us via the variety of surveys, social media, um, uh, per, uh, interactions here at City Hall, um, online, throughout the meetings, public hearings, um, which obviously this commission's, uh, well, uh, well-versed in. Some of the focus areas of, uh, for community and economic development, trying to identify the relationship between the goals and our work in CED, uh, included the completion of the Transportation System Master Plan. That was adopted on August 1st, uh, of this month, um, by the Pasco City Council, and we're working on implementing that now. The design and development standards to support connectivity, walkability, sustainability, and public gathering spaces. The event that, um, Kelly mentioned from the Health District, uh, that took place in Olympia, the Walkability Institute, um, emphasized the importance and the relationship of public health and built environment, which assumes that you have the appropriate network in place to actually accommodate that. Uh, so that gets to that goal there. The completion of the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, that's an effort that we are working on now. We received a grant from the Walk- That's an effort that we are working on now. We received a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce to produce our first comprehensive housing plan. Very excited to work on that effort. In fact, I think the commission may recall that we are also working with the Benton Franklin Health District and the Franklin County and City of Pasco Housing Authority via the New York University and Lincoln Institute Pure Cities Network to address barriers to increasing housing. So we're working on it in a variety of ways. And also adopting policy standards to ensure consistency of long-range planning. So how do we adopt the right policies, strategies, et cetera, that link all of our plans together? Which, while quite challenging, is certainly well-worthy effort considering that a lot of the resources already are in place or the data has already been collected by other agencies that we partner with. This is a graph that summarizes some of the inputs and results from the 2021 National Community Survey. There's a variety of categories here, taking into account results from 2007 up through now. And just a few quick notes on these. That line that you see in the middle marks fifty percent favorability or positive rating. So there's been a decrease in some of that across some of the elements that are most concerning for us here in planning and CED. In particular, I'd point out that there's been a forty percent decrease in the community favorable rating on traffic flow since 2017. A thirty percent decrease in how the community views pedestrian and bicycle transportation, so traveling outside of a vehicle. It's been a thirty percent decrease in how they view that. And a twenty percent decrease in the planned residential growth. I think it's important to note that developments have a long timeline from the time that they submit an application to the time that they go through the hearing examiner. And then the final planning of a project. It can take anywhere from six months to two years. And so the results that we see here are based on what was planned years ago. In fact, the very first project that I worked on in 2020 was a shared frontage ordinance that this commission may remember. And right after the option of that shared frontage ordinance, which allowed additional units to be built without public frontage, if you recall, was approved by a hearing examiner in 2020, and it's still in construction today. So we don't actually, there's a lag. And that's, I thought it was important to note the importance of long-range planning and why staff is emphasizing that more and more throughout our development processes. So the National Community Survey also identified, based on public input, where the focus should be. And so seventy-five, seventy-eight percent indicated that a focus should be, a high priority focus should be on transportation system and planning. Ninety percent indicated that design and layout of residential and commercial areas should be a priority. Eighty-nine percent indicated that the economic health of Pasco should be a priority. So these are some things that we'll look at as we develop policies, working with our stakeholders, other agencies, with Planning Commission, our hearing examiner, and obviously City Council and public, and bring these recommendations to the Planning Commission in an effort to try to achieve the goals that council has set forth for the community based on results the community has told us. So really short summary, there was a really in-depth staff report and presentation provided by our executive team back in May. And thought I'd provide Planning Commission with an update on that effort as well. So happy to answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? I just had a comment. I noticed that the the quality index decreased on the traffic flow. Is that because of the issues we've been having with congested traffic along the road, sixty-eight burden, and other areas like that?
There's not a spatial or a mapping component to this survey. But if there were, it might be interesting to see if there's an overlap between the survey results from this survey and those that responded to the Transportation System Master Plan. If you recall, a lot of the dots indicating challenges for crossing, you know, streets because there's no crosswalks or no sidewalks, or they're just feeling unsafe. Or high vehicle speeds or just high vehicle traffic. A lot of those are congregated in some of our newer developments, particularly focusing on Road 68. And obviously, there's a fear of Road 100 and Broadmoor replicating some of the challenges that exist today on Road 68. And so I think that's a critical part where we're looking at diving into what Road 68 has today and how to avoid that on other corridors. And the development patterns that are adjacent to Road 68 lead to what we have today. You've bound it by auto-oriented commercial uses. And there are sporadic development patterns that make it difficult to get to those commercial uses on top of the, something that we don't really have much control on, which is limited access to Interstate 182. So we've kind of compounded and compounded and compounded elements that lead to congestion with no other options but to drive, leaving no other options for community members. So when we begin to overlay the results of comprehensive plan input from the community, the TSMP, the Transportation Master Plan, the relationship between housing and destination, we begin to be able to, I think, more appropriately identify better solutions that address the root issues themselves versus putting Band-Aids on a challenge.
Commissioner Handler?
Yeah, Mr. Gonzalez, sort of part and parcel of what we were talking about earlier. I've been watching this for quite some time, this development, particularly Road 68 and certainly Broadmoor Boulevard and all those hundreds of acres out there. And I appreciate all the work you guys have done and you know, the emphasis, if you will, on design and livability and exciting spaces and stuff like that. When I looked at that plan I showed you earlier, I didn't see a lot of care being given to those kinds of thoughts. And, you know, I just want to say that I hope we can somehow revisit these efforts and think about what we're proposing out there. Because frankly, it looks just really unorganized and frankly, a little bit like what Road 68 didn't want to be. I mean, there's a lot of work that needs to be done out there. I'm sure I'm not saying something you don't know. But I just want to encourage the powers-to-be that that whole six hundred or eight hundred acres out there, in my humble opinion, hasn't really been thought out yet. And so just, you know, I encourage further conversation and involvement on that. And I stand by to participate in any way I can. You know, just wanted to make those points. And again, thank you for all the hard work. I know it's difficult. But thank you for the hard work, and I hope we can improve as we move forward.
Thank you so much. The other thing that statistics that come out was the planned residential growth, the dip there and the planned commercial growth. I guess the question begs itself, do we need to do better when it comes to plan development? I know that we have a responsibility to make sound decisions and, excuse me, have recommendations to the city council. And you have a lot of good projects being worked out there, such as the problem with development. And so I wonder if we need to communicate better. I know that it takes some time for those projects to pan out. But anyways, that come out. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, it sounds like there's no other comments. So I think we're ready to move to workshop item B memo, Street Connectivity Amendment Update. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you again, members of the Planning Commission. This is actually a really short update for the commission. You may recall that in October of 2020, after, I think, eight public hearings and twelve meetings in total, the Planning Commission recommended the Pasco City Council approval of a street connectivity amendment that would put in place connectivity standards for all new development, particularly focusing on residential development in the city of Pasco. That item was shared and presented with the City Council on three different occasions. And the City Council has asked staff to ensure that the recommendation fits the need of the community and has addressed all concerns from those questioning the potential benefits or potential concerns that the amendment presents. That item also was a fairly significant part of the Transportation System Master Plan, which you may recall is one of the recommended strategies was connectivity standards, block length. Commissioner Handler, you may recall at the, I think at the June or the May Planning Commission meeting, when discussing residential design standards, you had asked a question about how do we avoid these long rows of townhomes? And right now, it still is the only way to prevent a lengthy, lengthier than maybe necessary or wanted row of homes is block length. And the street connectivity effort, if you call, addresses block length specifically. So staffs moved forward, and we're working with our transportation consultant, DKS, on an effort to bring this back to the Planning Commission. We're reevaluating the proposal. We'll also be working with our stakeholder groups, including the Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities and anybody else who's really interested in transportation to gather, to gather the input, not only on the amendment itself, but certainly to the item we just presented, which is how do we achieve council goals? So we're looking to bring that back to the Planning Commission early this fall. And then hopefully have, if there is a consideration for a change to the recommendation, we will bring that to the commission. Otherwise, we will provide status updates and then results of the engagement and then bring that back to City Council this fall. So with that concludes shortest presentation on street connectivity. I think this commission's heard, but happy to answer any questions I can this evening. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions and comments for Mr. Gonzalez? Hearing none, I guess we're ready to move on to workshop item C memo presentation from the, oh, never mind. Looks like we already got that one done. So if there's no other comments or questions, no further questions or comments, I've committed a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Handler, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Handler, second by Commissioner Bauer. Moving to second, this meeting is adjourned at 7:33 PM. Thank you.